Harikrishna, thank you so very much Gorangir, such a wonderful kirtan.
I am Gorangir Shilaprabhu.
Thank you so much, wonderful. Harikrishna and pranams dear devotees, Harikrishna Maharaj Janakram. So we are here for our weekly session on lecture of instruction and Prithivadar Maharaj is here. So we loudly chant one Harikrishna Mahamant to welcome Maharaj. Harikrishna, Harikrishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Srimati Arja Prithivadar Maharaj Ki Jai, Jagat Guru Shilaprabhad Ki Jai. Harikrishna Maharaj.
So then now if we will continue reading Uparashamrita. Just the end of the verse one.
Yes.
I am not sure where we exactly ended. It's uh yeah, I think it's just the very end. My dear brother, well, this is, this is from yeah Premaviwarta of Jagannatha Pandit. My dear brother, you are in the renounced order of life and should not listen to talk about ordinary worldly things, nor should you talk about worldly things when you meet with others. Do not think of woman even in dreams. You have accepted the renounced order of life with a vow that forbids you to associate with woman. If you wish to associate with Chetan and Mahapravu, you must always remember this incident of Chota Hariraas and how he was rejected by the Lord. Do not eat luxurious dishes or dress in fine garments, but always remain humble and serve their lordships. Shri Radha Krishna in your hearts, heart of hearts. The conclusion is that one who can control these six items, speech, mind, anger, tongue, belly and genitals is to be called as Swami or Goswami. Swami means master and Goswami means master of the go, the senses. When one accepts the renounced order of life, he automatically assumes the title of Swami. This does not mean that he is the master of his family, community or society. He must be master of his senses. Unless one is master of his senses, he should not be called Goswami but Godas, servant of the senses. Following in the footsteps of the six Goswamis of Rindawan, all Swamis and Goswamis should fully engage in the transcendent loving service of the Lord. As opposed to this, the Godasas engage in the service of the senses or in the service of the material world. They have no other engagement. Praad Maharaj has further described the Godas as Adanta Go, which means to one whose senses are not controlled. The Adanta Go cannot become a servant of Krishna. Insha Bhagavatam, seven, five, thirty, Praad Maharaj said. Matirana Krishna parata svatava, mito bipadieta grihavratana. Adanta Go bir vichatamta misram, puna puna charvita charbanana. For those who have decided to continue their existence in this material world for the gratification of their senses, there is no chance of becoming Krishna conscious. Not by personal endeavor, by instruction from others or by joint confidences. They are dragged by the unbridled senses into the darkest region of ignorance and thus they madly engage in what is called chewing the truth. Yeah, so well, that's, that's the summary and what we were talking about. Uh I think it's quite clear. It's oh yeah, the verse by, by Praad Maharaj is quite heavy. But it's exactly what it is. So one should, one should endeavor to control his senses, his urges or the urges of the senses. And even though one may not be no Swami or Goswami, but one may become Grihasta. Grihasta now he is also in control of his senses. In fact, actually Grihasta is also called technically Grihasta Brahmacari. Because he is, he is in the Grihasta Ashram for the purpose of bringing up Krishna-kodja children. So one should be a Grihasta, one should then not be Grihamedi. So and then we have a lifetime not to work this out. But then at the end of the life, then we should renounce whatever now attachments we have to this material world and try to surrender to the Lord. So then we can fully engage in devotional activities. For that, then the urges of the tongue, belly, genitals, anger, the mind, they have to be followed. Okay, so I don't know, is there anything more to the text one? Maybe some questions, I don't know, should we take questions, otherwise we just continue then text two?
Harikrishna. Maharaj, I think we think we should go for text two Maharaj.
So then, then we continue now with the text two. Atiyahara prasascha, rajalponyamagraha, janasangas chalauliyamcha, shabdhir bhakti vinasyate. Once devotional service is spoiled, when he becomes too entangled in the following six activities. One, eating more than necessary or collecting more funds than required. Two, over endeavoring for mundane things that are very difficult to obtain. Three, talking unnecessarily about mundane subject matters. Four, practicing the scripture rules and regulations only for the sake of following them and not for the sake of spiritual advancement or rejecting the rules and regulations of the scriptures and working independently or whimsically. Five, associating with worldly minded persons who are not interested in Krishna consciousness. And six, being greedy for mundane achievements. Again class now. It's downstairs.
I looked and then came up here. I came up here, I came up here because of.
Just one second. Maybe inside a desk, inside a desk maybe. Okay, so these six activities now they are very important. Because without following these, then it will be very difficult to make further progress. So like we started, we were talking about how the first verse talks about the personal, means what we have to do for ourselves. Now this is with interaction now towards others or how we deal with the outside world. So once control the senses, then now to be able to maintain controlling the senses, we need to follow these six activities. So now we have, we will, we will read then now what Shilaprabhad speaks. Human life is meant for plain living and high thinking. Since all conditioned living beings are under the control of Lord's third energy, this material world is designed so that one is obliged to work. The supreme personality of Godad has three primary energies or potencies. The first is called Antaranga Shakti or the internal potency. The second is called Tata Stashakti or the marginal potency. The third is called Bahiranga Shakti or the external potency. The living entities constitute of marginal potency and they are situated between the internal and external potency. Being subordinate as external servants, eternal servants of the supreme personality of Godad, the jivatmas or atomic living entities must remain under the control of either the internal or external potency. When they are under the control of the internal potency, they display their natural constitutional activity, namely constant engagement in a devotional service of the Lord. This is stated in the Bhagavad Gita nine thirteen. Mahatmanas dumam partha, davya prakritim ashritaha, bajantya an, tamanasoh, yathva bhuta dim avyayam, osanopritta. Those who are not deluded, the great souls are under the protection of the divine nature. They are fully engaged in devotional service because they know me as a supreme personality of Godad, original and inexhaustible. So uh anyway, we will continue. The word Mahatma refers to those who are broad-minded, not crippled-minded. Crippled-minded persons always engage in satisfying their senses. Sometimes expand their activities in order to do good for others through some ism like nationalism, humanitarianism, altruism. They may reject personal sense gratification for the sense gratification of others like the members of their family, community or society, either national or international. Actually, all this is extended sense gratification from personal to communal to social. This may all be very good from the material point of view, but such activities have no spiritual value. The basis of such activity is sense gratification, either personal or extended. Only when a person gratifies the senses of the supreme Lord, can he be called a Mahatma or broad-minded person. So this is important point. Then now what are we trying to do? Now it's about the consciousness. So ultimately, the devotee, pure devotee, he is on the Ananamaya platform. A devotee, an aspiring devotee who is practicing Vaidya Saranabhakti, then he is on the platform to achieve the Ananamaya and that's Vighyanamaya. So these platforms, these two platforms are considered that they are beyond the material platforms. But then we have the three lower ones, then Anamaya, Pranamaya and Manamaya. So those three platforms of consciousness, they are bodily consciousness, they are material consciousness. So they may seem, well, Anamaya means like animal consciousness. It's about just me, I, me, mine and that's all, cannot tolerate anything else. But now the Pranamaya, it's about me and tolerating others. And as Shilaprabhad now points out here, actually this is just extended sense gratification. So the Anamaya is just sense gratification, my senses, I enjoy and I don't let anybody. And the Pranamaya is just extended sense gratification, it's the same thing. There's no, no difference really, just it looks noble and it's through the isms. Giving charity, no. But ultimately, when, when it's done like that, it's still for me. Because I want to enjoy, I want to make happy, no, I want to build a temple, okay. But I want my name to be there, so that everybody knows that I did it. Now I want to please somebody because when I please someone, no, like my family or somebody, so they are happy with me and then I'm also happy. So ultimately, it's just extended sense gratification, it's still on the material platform. So we have to get above that. Even the Manamaya, which then it's, it's a platform of uh you can say, well morally, no, yeah, varnashrama, so it's a dharma. But unfortunately on the Manamaya platform, there is no Krishna in center, there is no God. It's understood how it should work, but it's going to be still, no, so I benefit from it. We see like for example Hiranyakashipu, he was perfect, he, he, he knew Dharma Shastras. He, he knew varnashrama, he followed varnashrama, he, he was just excellent, he could preach. The only difference was that he didn't accept anything in connection with, with God. So it was all followed and the demons they followed, the smart demons, they follow varnashrama because this is a natural system, but they don't now put davya, they don't put God in center. Like the, the story, you, I know it now. Nararamuni goes to visit, uh visit Narayan and on the way then he sees the Brahmana. And Brahmana asks him, oh, no, Nararaji, where are you going? I'm going to see Lord Narayan. Oh, really, that's great, so please can you ask him, now how long will I be still in the material world here? Okay, I will do that. And then he goes and sees Kobler and the Kobler now also asked, oh, Nararaji, where are you going? I'm going to see, no, Nararamuni, I'm going to see Narayan, Lord Narayan. Please can you ask him on my behalf, then now when will I be able to leave this material world? Please, I will do that. So and then he goes, sees Nararamuni, sees Nar, Nararamuni sees Lord Narayan and he asks about, no, them, those two people. And Lord Narayan says, well, the Kobler, this is his last lifetime and he will be liberated. He will go back not to me. And as for the Brahmana, eh, he has many, many, no, hundreds, thousands of lifetimes to go. Nararamuni was astonished, no, why is that? And that, that Brahmana, he is so learned, he knows Shastra, he knows everything. And the Kobler, he is just making shoes, no. So and then Narayan, Lord Narayan said, okay, when you go back, they will ask you, what was I doing? Just tell them that I was putting an elephant through an eye of a needle. What? Just tell them like that you will see. So then Nararamuni, he goes and then he sees the, the Brahmana. And the Brahmana, no, he, he says, oh, did you ask, no, what was, what was, no, Lord Narayan doing? And he said, yeah, Lord Narayan, then he was sitting there and he was putting an elephant through an eye of a needle. And the Brahmana, he was, what? What do you mean? How can you put an elephant through an eye of a needle? This is a nonsense, this is all nonsense, how can, how it can be done? No, it's impossible, no, finished, I, I don't, I don't take it. Nararamuni was like, okay. And then he goes and sees the, the Kobler and the Kobler then asked, oh, Nararamuni, nice to see you. Please, what was Lord Narayan doing? Did you see him? Said, yes, I saw him and when I saw him, then he was putting an elephant through an eye of a needle. And the Kobler, no, he was in bliss, wow, that's wonderful, only the Lord can do that. And Nararamuni was like, do you believe it? And he said, of course I believe it. And how is it possible then? Asked Nararamuni and the Kobler said, look, I'm sitting here under the banyan tree. And this banyan tree has thousands of fruits. Each of the fruits has thousands of seeds inside, there are small, tiny, tiny seeds like poppy seed. And in each of the seeds is a tree huge like this one. So if the Lord can fit huge tree like this into a small, tiny seed, why cannot he put elephant through iron needle? So and then Nararamuni understood, yes, he has faith. Therefore, he is liberated. Somebody who has no faith, then no, he, the faith, the shraddha has to be developed. So therefore, the first three bodily consciousness, the levels of consciousness are not useful. We need to get above that. So the only useful one then is the Vighyanamaya aiming for Ananamaya. Okay. In the above quoted verse from Bhagavad Gita, the words davya prakritim refers to the control of the internal potency or pleasure potency or the supreme personality of, of the supreme personality of Godad. This pleasure potency is manifested as Shrimati Radhani or her expansion Lakshmi, the goddess of fortune. When the individual jiva souls are under the control of the internal energy, their only engagement is a satisfaction of Krishna or Vishnu. This is the position of Mahatma. If one is not a Mahatma, he's a duratma or a crippled-minded person. Such mentality, such mentally crippled duratmas are put under the control of the Lord's external potency, Mahamaya. It's uh whether we are under the control of Yogamaya or Mahamaya. Mahamaya means that we are under the control of the external energy. We are attracted to the material world, we just want to enjoy, ahamamanti. Being, being under the control of Yogamaya means we are attached to Yogamaya, to Lord's internal potency and therefore we are serving the Lord. Now as we, we have the attachment, we can think of the attachment as like one unit. And we can decide what we want to be attached to. Do we want to be attached to Maya, to Mahamaya or to Krishna? And as much as we are willing to be attached to the material world, that much we cannot be attached to Krishna. And unless we are attached hundred percent to Krishna, then we will not be fully Krishna conscious. So it's up to us, we have to make the choice and it's all, nothing physical, no. It's all about the decision. I want, I don't want material world and I want Krishna. We decide that, that's our free will, with the desire, paramatma will help us to achieve the goal. But we have to desire that, that's all we need to. So the whole life, practicing of devotional activities, practicing devotional service, serving devashnavas is all about so that we can change our desire. That I want to serve Krishna, I want to serve the Vaishnavas. If we change the desire, that I don't want to serve myself, I don't want to enjoy my senses, I want to serve Krishna, I want to enjoy, I want to have Krishna enjoying his own senses, I can serve him. If we shift this desire, then our life is successful. Then we have, no, successfully come to the platform of Ananamaya. That's all, just the desire, nothing else, everything else will automatically follow, everything else will fit in. We are trying to only change our desire. That's under our control, that's all we can do and if we do that, we are successful. So to be able to change the desire or to develop the desire to serve the Lord, then we have to control our senses and we have to avoid these activities which are described in the second verse of Uparashamrita. Because not following that, then it will make us again fall down and again we will try to pick up and again we will fall down and it will be like, again like a cycle of constant struggle. So we are trying not to do that and therefore we should follow the four, the six, six activities which are described in the second verse. So maybe questions?
Harikrishna, what is, do you have any questions from the second verse? Yes. Harikrishna Maharaj, januparnam and glory to Shilaprabhad. Thank you so much Maharaj for the wonderful explanation. Maharaj, I had one question, but although I also think that it may also be cleared up more in further sessions, but I would still ask, you said in the last that it is all about the decision, what we decide and then paramatma will help us to achieve the goal. But many times we slip in our determination. Uh what we want to achieve or, or we are still because of our nerthas and, and our past impressions, we slip many times. So can you suggest something Maharaj, how to be more determined in fixing on the decision part?
Yeah, that's, it's normal and actually that's another study, now what, what we can do. Shavishma Chakravarti, he writes in Madhyakadambini about all these stages. So it's, it's, it's happening. What we need to do, then we need to find an association of devotees and we need to like that association. If we are in such association in which we can practice, then even without us knowing, we will be making progress. So through association, not to focus much on kind of like a, no, today I fell down or I have to again, no, no, correct this, do that, rather focus on what positive did we do? Did we serve some Vaishnavas? Did we serve the Lord? Did we now focus on our japa? Did we change little extra? Did we read? Did we study some Shastra? So focusing on the positive in the association of devotees, these, these uh detrimental activities, they will be cleared eventually. And as we were saying, no, it's actually about, not the decision, it's about your desire. So to develop the desire. So if you find a pleasure in serving the devotees, then you develop desire to serve the devotees. You develop desire to serve devotees, Krishna will give you all the opportunities so you can serve them and you will be purified. If you are trying to serve devotees, but you don't like serving devotees, you will not be purified. You, because you will not have the desire, no, I'm, I'm trying and it's not happening, no, I don't like it, no. I rather just do something on my own and. I don't like it, no, I'd rather just do something on my own," and so that's not the right attitude, and therefore, it will not bring the purification which you are looking for. So we should work on the desire. How can I develop the desire to serve the Lord? How can I develop the desire to serve the Vaishnavas? How can I develop the desire to chant more rounds? If we can work on that, that will bring us perfection. There's nothing else needed, that's all, that's it. So, yes, there are ups and downs, because we are still attached, you know, to the material activities, but we want to do something spiritual, but because of the senses being too attracted, suddenly we are dragged down. It's, it's happening, it is normal, it's a process, but if we maintain our determination that I want to serve the Lord, we will find a way how to overcome the attachment to the material activities, and we will be purified. But only through association, so therefore, we should be looking for that. Yes?
Yes, yes Maharaj, thank you so much. It was, uh, clear. Hare Krishna, do we have more questions?
Hare Krishna, yes. Hare Krishna, Dhanapurnam Maharaj. Maharaj, just say, right now explain about that, uh, that we have to dovetail our desire so that we get a pleasure in that one, like you just given an example of serving a devotees and chanting also. But a lot of time even this things comes in my mind also, and a lot of other devotees also say that we are not getting a pleasure specifically while chanting. So, uh, so how can we just increase that, uh, maybe a love or maybe a desire or maybe a pleasure for chanting, serving, reading, and all these things? So what should we incorporate in ourselves so that we get all these things, we get attracted towards this thing, and we get inspired to do more on these things actually?
See like, for example, okay. Now, take a family man. Take, take a mother, okay? Now, she may like cooking, but sometimes she is tired, and she would like not to cook, but she has to cook. Will she cook? She has to. So, okay, I like cooking, but today I am tired, but still I have to cook. So she will do something as a duty, because it has to be done. That will make her stronger. Right? So sometimes we do activities because we like them. Everything is perfect, the situation is perfect, you know, nice guests, you know, so you want to, you know, cook nicely for them, so then everything is perfect. But sometimes it's not perfect, but still it has to be done. So chanting of the Japa. You know? In the beginning, sometimes rarely, thing may be perfect. I'm not tired, no, and, no, I'm in such an association, everybody chants, so then I feel kind of like liking Vaikunta and I'm chanting. But most of the time, when I'm at home, and in the morning I get up tired, and I'm alone, now I'm supposed to chant. So it's not perfect situation, maybe, but it has to be done as a duty. Okay, so forget it, now, okay, I will put on, you know, Praapada Japa, and then I will chant my sixteen rounds now. That's my duty, I promised that, now, I had given the Brata, so I will do that. So it can be done, maybe the taste is not there, you know, for the Japa, but the taste is there for being honest, being responsible, being accountable. These are good qualities. And if we maintain these qualities, if we maintain the activity through these qualities, it's a question of time when it will develop into liking it. So that's all it takes. If we have a taste for chanting, okay, chant because you have taste for it. If you don't have the taste for the chanting yet, then do it because it's your duty. Take it as a responsibility. Why does one get up in the morning, you know, from his bed? Either he likes it, or he has to, or he doesn't, right? No, it's, it's after him. So if he likes to get up because, you know, he, he gets more time to read or to chant or whatever he wants to do in the morning, to study, then he will do that happily. If he has to go to work, he has to get up, you know, because he may lose the work. It's out of fear, you know, or feeling dutiful, he has to do it. And he has no responsibility and doesn't like to do it, then he will not wake up. So we also have to, you know, see, do we want to wake up? If we want to wake up, through a Japa we can wake up, so chant. But if it's, "Yeah, but no, I, I still, I'm so tired and like that," it's your duty. That's why, now, during the initiation, one promises minimum sixteen rounds of Japa. But that's minimum, can be, you know, sixty-four, right? You know, one luck or two lucks, you know, there's no limit. So that's what it is. So to look, we have to look forward to develop the taste for, but it will be through responsibilities, duties. And that should be encouraged, that, like we are talking about the Sadhusanga. So sometimes, you know, get together or even inquire, "Oh, how many rounds did you chant today?" "Oh, today I, I was a little tired, you know, yeah, okay, but, yeah, thank you for asking, but okay, tomorrow I'll, I'll chant definitely more." So if there is some interest among friends, that Sadhusanga is there, then also it works much better. Yeah?
Yes Maharaj, thank you so much.
Hare Krishna, no, that was the last question Maharaj, that's my last friend said.
Okay.
So, uh, thank you so very much Maharaj, you take time. And every week, we get to hear the Deshamrits so nicely. So thank you so very much. And we loudly chant, Hare Krishna, Mantra, thank Maharaj. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram, Ram. Hare Krishna, so thank you devotees for coming. Kevira Sostho, ki ap, abhi, abhi nahi pata chalega, but maybe, you know, after six, seven years, you will realize how such a senior devotee gave us association from Mayapur every week for forty minutes. And jab bhi aap padenge, hum padenge Nektram Instruction, aap vahisha yaad karenge ki Maharaj ne kaise bataaya, chota, chota sa, ek, ek line aapko dekhiye, padke, bata reh hai. So please make use of this and, you know, or please make the session interactive, if you ask questions, then it is, uh, inspiring for the preacher also that people are hearing carefully. So thank you so very much, Hare Krishna, All Glories to Prabhupada.